Well, good evening. I can begin as we try to. We can't get it, Mary, that's fine, too. We can work our way around it. My name is Dave Stephens. You asked me back in September to chair this particular committee. I'd like to go ahead and introduce the other members of the committee who are here. Madeline Weaver Blanchett, please stand. Richard Green. Thomas Miranda. Gail Perman. Bill Shear. Megan Wolf. And Mark Warner. And Todd Thompson, also a part of our committee, who are not here. I want to thank them for their service because this has been a wild ride. I also want to thank our staff person, Mary Madera, who kept us on track and within the open meeting laws. And also Stephen McGoldrick, who's the deputy director of the Collins Center at UMass, who you folks hired to help us facilitate this process. I want to run through this slideshow. This is only a portion of what we use during the public forums, just to make sure that people are aware of it. It's part of the public record that's posted on the website. Covers a lot of basic information that you folks all know. 1654, the city itself was incorporated in 1884. Mary, you can go to the next slide. What the Charter is, and here's the definition. It defines the structure of the city and town government for a particular community and which may create local offices, distribute powers, duties, responsibilities among local offices, and may establish and define certain procedures to be followed by the city, town, or government. To the next slide. All the stuff that people can look for, the people who are on home, you can go to your local computer, you can type in that website you see there. And a lot of the information that is currently posted, that you can access your way through for those who like to read. Next slide. Back in, you had a Charter Review Committee, which is part of your ordinances. That particular ordinance was chaired by Alan Seawall, that committee. Several members here sat in on that. You recommended that we needed to take a look at a comprehensive charter reform. That description is there. That's versus a smaller or incremental charter reform, which you have done in the past. The most recent one that is, the changes in the DPW, but also the changes in the Treasurer's Office. So those were incremental changes. You recommended that we needed to take a look at a comprehensive charter reform. Next slide. The previous efforts were in 1973, where it failed by, somewhere in there, it tells you how many votes, but it was 152 margin when they tried to do a comprehensive update of the Charter back then. Then in 1995, another effort was started, but unfortunately, that effort did not gain the signatures enough to get itself back onto the ballot. Next slide. So, we've done incremental changes, and again, these can be viewed as well on the website. But, as I pointed out, the ones in the public works, the Treasury's Office and others, that we did by just making small changes to the Charter, which is still something we can do later on. But you recommended us to take a look at a full, comprehensive review. Next slide. And here's some of the acts that you can list to go through for those incremental changes. The next slide. This is the slide that talks about who was on that committee, of the review committee that recommended a comprehensive change. And you can see the members listed mid-page. And then the source tells you how that is created by the Secretary of State's office. So the next slide. Again, this is the Home Rule Amendment. And the next slide. And we have gone with a Home Rule petition, may appoint a study committee, and then creates the timeline. That's what we are. Next slide. This is your charge, that you enacted us to be the drafting committee. And you put a sunset clause that today was the last day. You made us complete our work by today. We're not complete, but we'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide. These are the members I introduced, again, with Mary being the staff person and Steve being the facilitator. Next slide. We held public forums Tuesday, November 15th. We covered the topics you see, 1 through 5 there. I'll explain those in a little more detail. Next slide is, we had a second public forum on December 6th. We covered the information you see there as well. Again, this is all posted up on the website for people who want to go through this in detail. But we solicited information in all of those three areas you see there, as well as, we asked for an overview if anybody had other topics they wanted to bring up, or revisit any of the ones from the first public forum. Each of these were three hours. They were held here. They were cable, local cable access did video them for us, so we appreciate that. Next slide. This is the timeline. I want to review it with you very quickly, because it's, you guys now play a factor. The drafting committee is to complete by mid-January today. City Council and the mayor advance a proposal legislation to Beacon Hill by mid-March. So you have basically 60 days. The governor reviews and approves, the Secretary of State reviews and puts it on the November ballot, and then the voters will decide to approve or reject November 6th. The key point is, in this slide, is the bullet number 2, the work that we're asking you folks now to advance this. If you're going to meet your November 6th ballot, you need to complete this by March, mid-March, and have all the changes you want into the document by then. Because by then, the document is frozen. You can't change it after that point. It goes to the legislature, who votes it up or down. It goes to the governor, who can sign it or veto it. It goes to the Secretary of State, who says, yes, it can be on the November ballot or not. But you can't change it after mid-March. Then the voters will be able to approve this or reject it. And it's the last item, as you see there. But there will not be a menu. You can't interject a substitute amendment or anything. It's an up or down vote on that document that goes all the way back to mid-March. So again, the public that are watching, we're suggesting that the next 60 days is critical. If you find issues in these documents, after you have a chance to read them, you need to talk to your city councils, come to public forums, and the open meeting discussion at the beginning of these forums, to be able to put your input in there. Send the material to Mary Madera, who will post it. But we have 60 days, if we stick to this timeline, to complete that task. Next slide. And again, this is where this information can be found. You can go to the website, find all the background information, not only the review committee, but the drafting committee. And then Mary Madera's email is there, where you can send her emails that she will post. If you have comments on any particular issue, circulate them to the city councils. The final slide is the draft, which you should have in front of you, the current version of the draft. This is a working, living, breathing document that you have now until mid-March, if you stay with that timeline, to complete. I was trying to come up with a way to explain the Charter. And I don't know how many people have actually read the Charter. Myself and those people on the committee, we're all kind of wonky people, and we actually liked reading regulations. But I was trying to figure out how to demonstrate what the Charter is. If you actually read the Charter, and I culled out a section here, which I thought was very intriguing. On page 6 of our current Charter, it refers to the powers of the mayor and the alderman. This is the current Charter we're working in refers to the alderman. That is one example of many within this document. The other portion of this document, when I talked about those incremental changes, there've been 100 of them. They're not actually incorporated in the body of the Charter itself. They're over here someplace. What we are trying to do is get it all into one document, so the citizenry can turn and take a look at that document and say, oh, okay, I understand how the government works. How this came forward in the last election, when the mayor then resigned, there was questions about how you fill a vacancy. And it was very difficult in the current Charter to be able to sort that out. So we're recommending, again, ways to clean this up. Now, when I was looking for that visual, to show the difference between what I saw our current Charter to look like, I've been fortunate to be married to the same man for 27 years, 6 months, and 19 days. We started in an address book back then. This is our address book. It has little envelopes in it, it has pages that have been torn out, it has people who are no longer with us, it has, some people have three or four or five addresses in it. It is a mess. This is what I use as the example for the current city Charter. There's scraps of paper in it, there's handwriting notes in the margins, there are addendums, the special acts, which are over here, they're not actually in the Charter itself. This is what the current Charter of North Hampton, our city, looks like. This is what it should look like. It should be accessible, that anybody can download it, find out exactly how the rules of our governance are. They should be able to find clean copies of information. They shouldn't have to sort in three or four or five different locations. They should be able to pull it online here. So when our committee got together to set this up, now, watch me lose half of this. We decided that we needed to make the Charter clean. We needed to make the Charter comprehensive, but concise, and it needed to be efficient. We also went with the, Gail Perman, Judge Perman is on our committee, and she mentioned something that just stuck with me the whole time, that when we develop our recommendations, they shouldn't be, and I'm going to paraphrase her, not just on the myopic lens of the recent political events, but to look at the broader sense, to develop what is best for our city for the next 100 years. Again, the last time was 1883. So we're looking at something that we want to keep into the 21st century. This is a consensus document. It is not, we didn't necessarily have enthusiastic agreement on every issue. Many of you made recommendations, we may or not have considered them, but we also recognize that you will now have the opportunity to put your own rubber stamp on, or put your own stamp on this particular piece. We were governed by the open meeting laws, and we also use the Committee on Best Practices as a way to operate. We have met 13 times so far. We are fortunate that we have gotten excellent press coverage, and I also want to point out Emily here from the North Street Association. She has logged many, many hours, as many as ours, making sure that this has all been taped, so the public can access it by going to North Street Association. We held the two public forums I talked about. We had a leadership forum, we were invited, the mayors, past mayors, current mayor, past city council president, school vice chair, to come and talk about some of these issues and how they interact. We've had, just finished a marathon, the last two weeks of the eight business nights in the last two weeks, counting tonight, our group has gotten together six times. In that 90 days, that we started from when we first met till today, we have tried to get through the document that you see in front of you. Because again, our document looks like this, we need to figure out what our starting point was. And Steve McGoldrick, who's not here, recommended this boilerplate. This institute helps cities and towns create their charters. That's the reason you hired them. This particular institute has a boilerplate Charter, that then you fill in the color for North Hampton. What does North Hampton wants to say in the Charter? But they walked us through, he walked us through the process. We reviewed, we picked out topics we wanted to have, those topics became what was in the forums that we did. We asked questions, we wanted people to solicit, to send in information, we got reined information. The books you see here are just some of what has been posted. I didn't download and print all of it, but there are opinions, actually from even outside of North Hampton, for people who wanted to weigh in on some of the topics we talked about. We have minutes. Overall, we probably had about 100 people or so who weighed in and made comments on the Charter. I thank all of them for their participation. But to be frank, there's about 28,000 people we have not heard from. I appreciate Bill and your efforts to keep this publicized, and I appreciate the press for their coverage of this particular issue. We reviewed all the submitted testimony that that solicited, and the draft is what you have before you. Again, our goal was to make it comprehensive, concise, efficient, and modern. We're not really proposing any radical changes here. It was more a job to clean it up, to make the Charter more efficient, to make the Charter look like this, as opposed to pages that are pasted in and handwritten over. But I'll give you a couple headlines. One of the headlines, I mean, they've been covered, I appreciate the Gazette's coverage on this, and northhamptonmass.org. The mayor, we're proposing going from a two-year to a four-year. All city councils and school committees will be two years. Recognize that some school committee now, your wards, are four years, and it's on a staggered term. But I bet that we couldn't find a consensus as to when those terms are right here, which is one of the confusions that people wanted to clean up. So all school committee, including wards, will be two years. We have transferred from the mayor to the city council president, the gavel, for this particular meeting. We created the role, or suggesting, again, these are our recommendations, the need for a vice president of the city council to act in the absence of the city council president. Now, whenever any of these changes are to occur, they get phased in after the next election. Remember, we have to vote this in next November, whether this gets changed or not. We have a vote in November, and then there's a timetable of how we phase things in. All right? We've increased the threshold for at-large races to 100, and to mayor to 150 is our recommendation. And again, we cleaned up that language around succession, so it's very clear as to when you kick in, when you, and when you fill a vacancy, or when the president would step forward.
That's for nomination papers?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that, for nomination papers. We kept current. One of the topics that was hotly debated in this room during one of the forums, of whether the clerk should be elected or appointed, we kept it the way it is. Even though there were people who had strong feelings on that issue, it's the way it is. We retained the current two forms of citizen access, the initiative petition and the referendum, which have been used in this city during at least my 30-year tenure. One of the things that was recommended, that I think that we all embraced, though we did not feel it was a Charter issue, and I'm going to call it the Barry Roth Amendment, he's sitting behind us over here. Mr. Roth, very articulately, on several occasions, spoke to the need to include something that allowed for the recording of the minority opinion. He talks about pros and cons, but I talk about the minority opinion. Lots of times in our committees and on our task forces that we have as a city, only the majority opinion gets advanced and recorded in the minutes. Because it's done in subcommittees, it moves forward, there is not the full breadth of discussion. Barry suggests very strongly that we should make sure that all opinions are captured, and that they should be recorded in the minutes in the structure. We felt that that was a best practice, or a city council rule, that that wasn't necessarily a Charter piece. So we have kicked that to you folks for your discussion, and I know Barry is here to talk about that in future meetings, as to where that should be placed. We also created, or suggested, the creation of two commissions. One is an ongoing commission that we wrote into the Charter regarding salary and compensation of all elected officials. Right now, it's whenever you get around to it. And you haven't gotten around to your own for a long time. And I can tell you point-blank that we reviewed what you folks do for the salary and compensation you get, and we think you need a lot more money. But we also recognize how politically difficult that would be, especially during this decade-long recession that we seem to have been mired in. We felt that if there was a structured committee, commission, set up that would include outside folks, preferably people with background in this area, who could establish what the salary should be for city councilors, for mayors, for whatever, you did that on a periodic, regular basis. It's built into the Charter, as you have to consider it. Now, you have to vote on it, but not necessarily have to vote yes on it. But a commission would create a recommendation, and then that's a way that a salary adjustment could be made, if you deemed appropriate. We put that in the Charter. Another piece that we put in a recommendation, but not the Charter, was to take a look at our voting procedures. There was a lot of this debate and opinions on the preliminary elections, should we continue to have them? Because there's a cost involved in there. Should the final person win by majority, or is it okay with at 40%? There was a lot of discussion, I got involved in that, I take ownership for that, on that particular issue. And then there was discussions about runoff systems. And then we also went into the instant runoff concept, which has been adopted. We felt that that was important information that needed to be vetted, but in a longer term. So we are suggesting a special commission. One of the reasons that that needs to also be taken out of the Charter, but into your purview to create this commission, is it will directly impact the voting machines that we have. If you make a recommendation of a change, for instance, to IRV, you're going to need to have a voting machine change. And we are up in about two years, Wendy said, for that change. So this commission could be built into that. You could consider that as part of a commission. You may come out with that recommendation, and then you'd want to make sure that the machinery that we are about to purchase two years down the line is in accordance with that. So we're suggesting that you set up a commission, you take a look at that particular issue, along with, do we need a majority to win an election? Can you do it with just a general election as opposed to a primary? Or should we, can we, should we? Are we allowed to even do instant runoff, I mean, runoffs? What is the legal hurdles if the, does the state allow those type of variances? So that commission is another one that we ask you to take a look at. So again, your homework in the next 60 days is to review this document. You can wholesale throw out what we have, create your own. But if you meet the timeline, by mid-March, you need to be sending your second vote and sending this forward. Again, just having worked up on Beacon Hill, it takes a while for special acts to get through, it needs to get to the governor's office, and then more importantly, the Secretary of State needs to vet this, to make sure it beats the timelines, and then to put it on the ballot. So there's a lot of things that back us up to forcing a mid-March decision on your part. The piece that we didn't deal with, remember I talked about this file cabinet over here with 100 special acts? Because of the need for legal support and background on that, and we need the city attorney, city solicitor to do this, somebody from this body, the city clerk, probably Mary, Steve McGoldrick, and the city solicitor are going to need to read through those 100 special acts. Some of them are now null and void, but you need to weigh in on those and decide where they fit in the Charter. That was over our pay grade. We could not do that without legal support. So you're going to need to have the city attorney go through those and figure out where they fit in. That also has to be within your timeline. So there's a big piece that needs to be done here, that we have not been able to get We are currently writing up, we were asked after we wrote the final draft, which you have in front of you, why? Why did you make some of these decisions? So the team behind me is currently writing, even though we dissolve in about five minutes, the team behind me is going to write up a narrative and also have some bullets as to why we made, what we considered, how we got to this decision, just to give whoever takes this over some more background information beyond the minutes, the hearing, and the logs that were taped. Again, I want to just reemphasize to the public that are, if they're still awake and paying attention, that it's the next 60 days. If the city council adopts and moves forward, and I know Bill is going to talk about that in a few minutes, the timeline for advancing this, that's the timeline before the second vote, for the citizenry to weigh in. If you want to put up another opinion, you read part of this Charter, I encourage you to read it. Read the old one, read the draft, and put your recommendations. But we really, we're in a very, very tight timeline. You've got the next 60 days to deal with that. Reason why November 212, we wanted to do it, is because traditionally, if you look at elections, the elections that have presidential years and it have the most people voting. And that way, the most people in the city, as opposed to an off-year election where there might not be contest, we wanted the majority, as many people as possible to weigh in on this, which is why I believe you created the timeline you did, which we're still trying to follow. Again, this is a consensus document. I want to thank all the people sitting behind me who've done some work. And if you have questions, I can drag some of them up to help out. Thought I was going to get out.
So, thank you for all of your work, and I want to thank the entire committee. I want to ask you if you think it'd be useful if the council voted on continuing your committee for three days, so you could finish this narrative legally, instead of just on private time?
That'd probably be helpful. I was hoping to talk to Wendy prior to this meeting, and if we could just get an extension to the end of the month, because the narrative is taking us a little bit longer to hammer out.
All right, thank you.
Council President? A couple of process questions. In order for this draft to leap the hurdle of the council, what's the vote threshold? Majority, supermajority?
I don't have a clue. I saw that email today you sent me. I scrambled through all of my notes, and I honestly don't know what the recommendation is. Simple majority? That would be my gut, but I don't know that for a fact.
Well, it's important.
Yeah, it's very important, and again, we would need to check with the city solicitor or the Secretary of State's office for that piece.
We have the information from 1884, we did that.
I actually could probably, I didn't even think of that, I probably could dig that up.
That was the alderman then.
Yeah. We were a town then.
Actually, what I am proposing, given what David has laid out, the charge that he's left us with, the special acts thing freaks me out. But, because that's actually, David's, and his address book is dealt with the first five pages, and the rest of his address book is what we have to sort out, is the special acts that seemed appropriate at the time, 1954, 1948, 1936, that have no relevance or bearing. And unfortunately, as you said, our Charter is created much like Massachusetts road system, it followed down a goat path, and then it wasn't planned, it wasn't designed, it was actually evolved, in a manner of speaking. So, that's a, that's a big fight to take. And what we're proposing, what I'm proposing, with the council's permission, is to assemble as a committee of the whole. Rather than refer this out in committees, and because, as we know, the committee schedule is not going to get this back in time, particularly if there are any questions or amendments and changes, you'll come back in time for us to do two readings, to get it out, get it done, get it locked down by mid-March. So, we have the right to assemble essentially a special city council meeting, dedicated exclusively to the discussion and deliberation of this. And maybe two. Oh, I hope not, but maybe two. And I have some prospective dates, and this is all contingent on whether we can get NCTV to cover. I'm pretty confident that they will be able to, but January 25th, January 30th, the 31st, and then February 6th, 7th, and 8th, sorry. January 25th. These are the potential dates.
Can we move that until the council have a chance to ask us?
Right. We're not going to end the questions now, I mean, announcing this. While I've got the floor, I was just going to say, if somebody, just write these down and figure out what's going to fit in your council. This is the potential dates to convene as a committee of the whole, to deliberate and discuss this. The whole council, rather than referring it to ordinance, rather than referring it to Youth Commission, you know, and actually, or Human Rights Commission, along that line. Well, at least one, and possibly two. And I, because I don't know, I don't have a sense of what the, what the, the attending of the special acts is going to take.
Again, I think with the help of the city solicitor, the city clerk, you should be able to run through those fairly quickly. It's like, again, 1954, the one you referred to, changes from a, having a two-chamber body, legislative body, to a one-chamber body, city council. And again, so you just read it, you say, okay, not relevant to us, move on. But for instance, the change in the Treasurer's Department, the change in the Board of Public Works, those are things that you're going to need a little bit more technical expertise, just to make sure that nothing changed, nothing in the Charter impacts that. Again, we took the Charter, there were a lot of things in the Charter that shouldn't be there, that should be in your rules and procedures. And we took things out of the Charter that don't, shouldn't be there, and that's, I think, the things you have to sort out on those special acts. Should all those special acts be in the Charter? Or should they come back and just be in your code and ordinance books? So that's the, that's the part that will be time-consuming, when you decide that little piece of it.
What's your, when you define a Charter, in your mind, as your committee went and proceeded with this, what was in your mind?
The basic, a basic document that outlines who the elected officials are, the terms of those elected officials, and the powers of those elected officials. When we got into, we had departments coming forward, wanting to impact the Charter, and we're saying, department information is not Charter. Okay? That goes back to ordinances. So when the fire chief came and said, oh, we want to, you know, and it's like, nope, that goes back into ordinances, that's in your code books, that's not what's in a Charter typically. So we really tried to hold fast to that line. And again, some of those special acts, you're going to really need to, need to go through just to make sure. Smith vocational, the library, you've got several of these others, quasi-public relationships that we have. You have to make sure that they fit in in accordance with what the current Charter has.
But do I hear you saying essentially, you don't think that those are appropriate for the Charter, the boilerplate Charter, that we should advance?
I would defer to Steve McGoldrick, and I would defer to the city solicitor. I would defer to Steve McGoldrick, and I would defer to the city solicitor for a final opinion on that, okay? But I think your charter should be as streamlined as possible with the basic facts, because again, the charter is harder to change, right? When you want to go and make a change on the board of public works, you have to go through all the hoops of a special act. Is that really where you want to do it? Now, maybe some things you park there because you want to make it difficult, and they can't change it easily, but really, is that where you want to have it so you can't modernize your documents and you have to go through something like this that may or may not have a controversial, that somebody might find something in this charter that they disagree with and are going to campaign against it, but 99% of the rest of the charter is good. So again, try not to put too much into it that is going to get you the 800-pound gorilla that might, might be problematic.
Okay, so this actually took the prospect around the possibility of dates, and we didn't read on those. Is it important that we have, either the folks that it didn't recommend it?
I've talked with Steve McGoldrick, and he said he would make himself available.
Okay. So that's who we would meet with for?
And I would invite members of the draft committee and the recommendation committee as well to come and speak on these things. In fact, encourage, maybe we can get, I doubt it, but maybe we can get more of the public to show up than you guys got for your meetings, but I mean, this is, this is one of the last bites of the apple, so it's important to emphasize that this is, until, well, the election, of course, is the biggest bite, but this is to the point where the public gets to weigh in and contribute to the disposition of this draft.
Counselor Adams, counsel president, do you suggest meeting as a committee of the whole, one or two times or however many times it takes, and that's it, and not have a good ordinance after that?
That would be my recommendation. I think, given the fact that we comprise, that the ordinance is comprised of members of this council anyway, I mean, that's a procedure that actually would just be redundant and would also jeopardize the prospects of this charter moving forward in a timely fashion.
Counselor Barnes?
I like that idea of all of us as part of government here being together and going through what we feel is extremely important in this charter. And I know I attended, let's see, I attended these charter committee meetings, and there was a lot that was taught there at each one of these meetings. I have to say, I do have a resident on my ward who had great concerns, which the chair from the charter committee talked about, Barry Roth, and he's not the only one. I've had some people who didn't come to the meetings but felt the same way he did also. I'm just wondering, when you're having this one or two meetings, and he suggested about, David did, about us talking with our city solicitor, do you think possibly she would be able to come to our first meeting?
I would hope that the lame wheel would be present for that, along with Steve McGoldrick, that we would have access to all the people we need to have access to in order to do this in an efficacious way.
The city clerk needs to be there too, because again, the keeper of the facts.
Yeah.
So.
It will be, it is my hope that, with this being the final push, that this be a comprehensive conclusion of all the entities that have some important in saying this, to help guide us, because we, this is a pretty big decision for us, man.
It is.
And we have to give it the due diligence.
Counselor Barnes?
And I also have to say, even with our city clerk, because she attended meetings with me, of, it was important of her vocally saying that we need to be very, very careful on how that charter was designed and not pushing a lot on the voters. And she stressed that, and she said, because, she said, oh, fair, if you put things in there that are just overwhelming, she said it would fail, people wouldn't vote.
Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Adams? So, Steve McGoldrick will be, he said he'll make himself available, okay, because I just want a question on the, on the three different ones for that.
I did find that information out for you that we talked about earlier, there are 12 towns in the city, in the state, out of 12, excuse me, 12 cities in the state out of 55, I think now, that have a four-year mayoral term.
Oh, 55 have four term?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one other question here, but it's confused about some of the language in here, a little clarification, should I wait for Steve McGoldrick to answer anything?
I think it might be appropriate, but, you know, again, the final, final draft Mary has, we were wordsmithing it today as the clock was ticking, it is posted for the public to take a look at. If I may do one more thing, Dave, can I just turn to my committee? Did I represent this correctly? Are there any issues that I missed or needed to be emphasized? I just want to make sure that everybody is.
Just that Mr. McGoldrick said he was work all the way through this process with the city council.
Thanks, Matty. Anybody else want to add anything? Gail, do you have? Please stand, can you come up here?
Sorry, if you guys are going to talk to your folks, I'm not.
Come up here.
Hi, everybody, I'm Gail Pearlman, a member of this committee. I just wanted to emphasize that Mr. McGoldrick is going to help you a lot on the issue of all the multiple phone book, numbers that you have to go through. He probably will do a lot of that prep work outside of the meetings that you're planning to hold, and my guess is that your, the most of your work in those meetings will be on the substantive changes and recommendations that this committee's made to the charter. So it's an overwhelming task, I know, but I think you don't have to feel quite as overwhelmed as if you have to go through 900 ordinances that may not apply.
That's a good one.
Anything else from the team?
Counselor Casey?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, it was fantastic, and I was going to make the recommendation that we look at this, and we from now get together, and I just wanted to say that I'm available anytime, yeah, pretty flexible, so whatever shows up, I'm ready, so just send me an email.
We're going to try to select a date, though? Go on, us and the bar, it's not a problem.
I also want to thank you, David. Being the chair was not an easy job, and I thank you for doing what you did. And I also want to thank all the committee members, because it was a challenge. And I know because Counselor Justin Adams, Counselor Murphy and I were on the first one, and that was not easy. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, again, I appreciate the support of all the city councils, not only have you attended many, most of you attended all the meetings, but you provided some great feedback, which I think helped us. Some of the issues that you put forward, we basically felt you could deal with them in this next phase, because there's some issues personal that you want to speak to, and we felt you were better to equip that to convince your peers to make whatever changes. But we do feel we put together a consensus document, we do feel that this is the best document we can put forward, given our 90 days, and it has a, I feel at this point in time, a good chance of passage by the city, because we don't have any wild things in there that could make people concerned.
Counselor, I'll yield to the counsel president.
Can we get a comprehensive list, an easy-to-read list of the 100 special acts or whatever the other stuff that's over here?
Yeah, I defer to Mary on that.
They're online.
Yeah.
If you go to the E-code, there are the actual main charters and all the special acts.
Okay, I'll see.
And that was in the, in the, the committee that Allen chaired, that you three were on, they actually highlighted all those and put them together for us, so it was very, that was a good first step, but it's, it's something that needs a legal attorney to take a look at.
Thank you.
Counselor, please, Dan. When we close the presentations in quarters, I'd like to amend the order of August 18, 2011. Okay. Okay, so, I'm not motion yet, because he's announcing his vote. Yeah. So, is there any other, any other questions or comments? Again, thank you very much, Mr. Chair and to the entire committee, for your service for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll return, Counselor Adams. If you would like to make a motion to accept the report and refer it to the committee of the whole, I think that would be a good reason.
Second?
So the motion is to accept the report and to refer it to the committee of the whole? Are those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
One, one date? Are there any other dates?
No, no.
He said date one, January 25th.
Begging the chairs, consultants. I don't want to speak on more, so.
Well, if you want to, if you'd like to take the time to try to schedule something now, or if you want to wait until after the meeting, or if you want to send dates around, it's maybe.
I'm going to say the dates and I'll email it to you. Mary and I discussed this, January 25th, the Wednesday, by the way, all these meetings will be convened here, and council chambers. January 30th, which is a Monday, January 31st, which is Tuesday, Monday, February 6th, Tuesday, February 7th, and Wednesday, February 8th. So if the council has the opportunity, check their calendars, see which time is the most opportune. I, given the fact that these guys met on average about three and a half to four hours sometimes for a meeting, fortunately, they did all the heavy lifting for us, and I don't, I don't imagine that we're going to have to do something like that, but I reserve the right to call another meeting of the whole should be required, so that by the time it comes to our, maybe our second meeting in February, or possibly, hopefully, certainly before or by the first meeting in March, we can move, we can, we can vote on this. Either to send it as a home rule petition or to burn it to the ground, which I sincerely hope isn't what happens, but that, and I don't think that's what will happen, but those, of course, are our options.
Counselor Casey, we have a question.
Would you be more comfortable, or would the council be more comfortable if this came up like two days in a row?
If we needed two meetings, two days in a row, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea, but I mean, that's harder to schedule in some cases, but we'll see. Let's, if, if everyone sends which dates are available, and Mary and I'll go through, hopefully we'll find a lot that are on record and that we can pull this off. We're, we're committed to moving on this quickly, but at the same time, I know, it's critically important that we have, as I said, this is one of the last bites of the apple, so this is, it's critically important that, that the public input and public access to deliberations.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes, January 30th, there is something going on at the Garden House?
There is an event that's going on at the Garden House in the evening, that's correct. But, you know, again, we'll, that's, that will become, that might be one of the conflicts. We're also open to time, as well, obviously, the preference would be for the evenings, I think, that's, because if you want to invite the public to talk and speak, you want to have it so that it's usually in the evening, so the public can attend, so.
Okay, so it sounds like there'll be some communication about what, which of these dates will be available, and then you'll announce something to the public after that. All right, so if we can return to the regular order of the meeting, we passed the presentation part, so we'll move now to the financial.